Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Rachel Moribidu, Chair of the Washington County Planning Commission. I just want to make sure that everyone can hear me. Okay. Today is October 1st, and this afternoon's meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Carlson, let us know that she may not be able to join. She may join virtually later. Commissioner Frye?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Just?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
And Commissioner Rosenberg will not be able to join. Commissioner Whips?
Present.
Commissioner Will?
Present.
Vice Chair Monte Blanco?
Present.
And Chair Moribidu?
Present.
We do have seven Commissioners present in the quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a Director's Report. May we please have the Director's Report? It is National Community Planning Month, and the Board will recognize this through adoption of a proclamation at their meeting next Tuesday, October 7th. We also have some information being shared online to promote the benefits of strong community planning. Some other news, on September 25th, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCDC, voted to uphold the Department of Land Conservation and Development Director's decision approving the expansion of the metro urban growth boundary for Sherwood West. So, once all of the appeals on this expansion have been exhausted, then staff will be bringing forward an ordinance to transfer that area from the rural to the urban area. Our Transportation Planning Group issued a request for proposals on September 29th seeking consultant services for the forthcoming update to the act of transportation elements of the transportation system plan. Those elements are aimed at enhancing pedestrian and bicycle safety, ensuring safe access to key destinations, and promoting a seamless transportation network. Other news, transportation-related. Earlier this week, the state legislature passed a transportation funding plan that will raise taxes to fund Oregon's road network and avert severe cuts to public transit services. Governor Kotek is expected to sign it. The new revenue raised by the bill will mostly be split between local governments and the Oregon Department of Transportation. Most of the money will go to basic maintenance of roads and bridges. As we mentioned at our last meeting in September, the State Oregon Planning Association Conference will be held in Bend on October 15th through 17th, and the Impact Transit Plus Community Conference, which formerly was known as Rail Evolution, will be held in Portland on October 26th through 29th. This is for information only that we mentioned last time, that unfortunately, we don't have sufficient funding to send all the Planning Commissioner members to the conferences, but just wanted to make you aware of them. And this is also partly the state planning conference's justification for canceling our October 15th Planning Commission meeting. In terms of staffing updates at our next meeting, Tricia Grisco, who's here today, will begin her role as the new Planning Commissioner liaison. Tricia's an Associate Planner in our Community Planning Group and works on annexations, plan amendments, and FEMA floodplain issues. And we wanted to assure everyone that Todd's not going anywhere. He's just transitioning to other projects in our Community Planning Division. And then, because we did have a lower turnout at our September 17th meeting, we just wanted to remind Commissioners that we've got a number of ordinance hearings coming up in the next few months. And we'll go through those dates here in a second, but just wanted to make sure people update their calendars. And it's always really helpful to attend these meetings in person if at all possible. So, to talk about items for today's agenda, there'll be a work session with Ken Renter overgoing updated county census data. And then we'll have hearing number one on ordinance 908 regarding metro center boundaries. For upcoming Planning Commission meetings, as I noted, October 15th will be canceled. We will be meeting on November 5th. There'll be a work session on the transportation system plan update, and then hearing number two, if needed, for the metro center boundary. On the November 19th agenda is a work session, the latest update on the Community Development Code Assessment, and then hearing number one on ordinances 909 and 910. Those are the Cornelius and Forest Grove Urban Planning Area Agreements. December 3rd, we have yet to identify the work session item, but we will be holding the first hearing on an ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units in specific rural residential areas. I know that's a topic of significant interest by everyone. So, that concludes my report, and I turn things back over to the Chair. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Johnson. The next item on the agenda is public communication. Is anyone signed up to speak on matters not on the agenda?
Chair, we have no one signed up in advance to speak on items not on the agenda. Would anyone in attendance like to speak to the Commission? If so, please indicate by raising your virtual hand. I'm seeing no hands, so I turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our work session on county data updates.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ken Renter. I'm one of the Senior Planners in Planning and Development Services. I believe as part of your welcome packet that Todd gives you when you start your service in the Planning Commission, he includes a snapshot of Washington County population and employment data. Much of that data is coming from the American Community Survey, or ACS. And the 2024 ACS data just came out last month. So, I'm here to give a little bit of insight into these numbers. First, a bit of background on the survey itself. The Census Bureau mails out questionnaires to about three and a half million households each year across the nation. They also reach out via online and in-person interviews to follow up with the people chosen to take the survey. Although the ACS covers more than 40 topics, I will focus today on just four main categories: population, economic, housing, and transportation data. I'll be going over data from 2021 to 2024. The COVID-19 pandemic disrupted the data collection for the 2020 one-year ACS, and the Census Bureau did not produce the one-year ACS data for that year. For demographic trends, after several decades of rapid growth, Washington County's population appears to have stabilized. We will have to see if the growth from 2023 to 2024 is a one-time blip or an early indicator of returning growth. As you can see, we had several decades where we were growing by more than five, sometimes 10,000 residents a year. And then, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, we're relatively flat. We've seen a slight uptick in 2024. And as I said, we'll see if that continues. Population change is the sum of two factors: natural change, meaning births minus deaths, and net migration, meaning the number of people moving in minus the number of people moving out. Births and deaths are relatively easy to track by county. Net migration is tougher, but the Census Bureau comes up with an estimate of net domestic migration and an estimate of net international migration by county for each year. From July of 2023 to July of 2024, births outnumber deaths in Washington County. And while more people from Washington County moved out to live in other parts of the U.S. than moved here to live from elsewhere in the county, more people moved here from other countries than moved out to live internationally. So, the natural change component was positive, and the net migration component was also positive, resulting in an overall population growth of almost 6,500. Communities of color have always made their home in Washington County. For all of its faults and data biases, the Census Bureau's data is still the most common way of counting and sorting the population. Census records show that the number of people who identify as Black or African-American, American Indian or Alaska Native, Asian, Native Hawaiian, or other Pacific Islander, some other race, or some combination thereof, and those are all the official census categories that we use, that that total has increased from at least 22% of Washington County's population in 2000 to at least 39% of the population in 2020. Today, Washington County is the most racially diverse county in the state of Oregon. The county is also becoming more diverse with respect to household income, familial status, age, and housing status. The ACS, just kind of by way of background, asks for this information using two questions. The first asks respondents to identify whether they are of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin or ethnicity. The second asks about race. And the categories have evolved over the decades and are still evolving. The current format allows respondents to check as many boxes as apply. It also captures write-in information that allows people to self-describe. ACS estimates come with a margin of error, or in other words, a range of uncertainty. The smaller the specific population segment or geography you are looking at, the larger that uncertainty will be. For example, in 2024, the ACS calculates that 42.1% of the Washington County population would select a category besides white, non-Hispanic when asked to describe themselves using the available census categories. The margin of error, or range of uncertainty around this estimate, is plus or minus 0.4%. In technical terms, that means that the Census Bureau is 90% sure that the actual percentage of Washington County population is somewhere between 41.7% and 42.5% for this particular statistic. The year-to-year changes that are showing up on the screen right now are statistically significant, meaning that the changes are more than would be explained by just random sampling variation. It also looks like the county is getting older, as measured by the median age. This change is not yet statistically significant, but it could be getting close, especially when you start comparing 2021 to 2024. You are getting into that range of it is likely to be statistically significant, not just, you know, the possible results of sampling variation. For context, the median age in Washington County is 28 and a half years. The median age for the United States is 39.2, and the median age for Oregon is 40.8. So, Washington County is overall younger than the state and younger than the nation. Roughly a quarter of the people five years and older in Washington County speak a language other than English at home. Many of these people also speak English very well. In 2024, roughly a third of these people reported that they speak English less than very well. Using 2023 ACS data, the Oregon Translation Advisory Council, the guiding group from the state, said that among the population that reported speaking another language at home and speaking English less than very well, the most common languages spoken are Spanish, Vietnamese, and Chinese. These are the groups that, when we are translating documents, these are the languages that we first look to, because this is what the data show the people in the community are speaking. The percentage of the 25 or older population that has a bachelor's degree or higher has risen slightly over the last four years. At the other end of the spectrum, the percentage of people without a high school diploma has been between 6% and 9%. For comparison, 37% of Americans and 38% of Oregonians have at least a bachelor's degree. This chart shows how much education people in Washington County have completed as reported in the 2024 one-year ACS. Residents younger than 25 are not counted in these numbers because of the way the question is worded. Each slice of the pie is a plus or minus percentage point or two. Though some economic data comes primarily from the ACS, there are also other sources of jobs data, such as employment data from state sources and income data from aggregated tax return from the IRS, and detailed economic data from specialized programs like the agricultural census. The ACS questionnaire asks people to report their income earned in the past 12 months. The federal government determines what the poverty level is for a household based on household size. That figure is adjusted each year. Census Bureau staff calculate the percentage of the population that has had an income below that poverty level. For Washington County, we've been roughly in the 7.5% to 8.5% range so far this decade. For 2024, both the state and national poverty rates were about 12%. So, here's another area where Washington County is more fortunate than both the state as a whole and the nation at large. Over the last four years, the share of the civilian, non-institutionalized population who do not have health insurance has remained relatively stable at 4% or 5%, give or take a percent point and a half or so. This is noticeably lower than the national rate of 8% and about the same as Oregon's rate of about 5% in 2024. The median household income, or the income level at which half the households in the county are below and half the households are above, has been rising. These figures are not readjusted for inflation. So, the 2021 estimate is in $20,000, and the 2024 estimate is in $20,000. But you can still see that even taking that little bit of inflation into account, we're still seeing significant growth in the median household income. For context, in 2024, the statewide median household income was a little over $85,000, plus or minus about $1,400. And the national median household income was $81,600, plus or minus 130 or so. Looking now at housing trends, this slide's data on new residential units built in the county over the last few years doesn't actually come from the American Community Survey, because the American Community Survey is just asking people who are already in their residences. It does inform the ACS data, however. Each month, the jurisdictions that issue building permits report to the Census Bureau's Building Permit Survey Program the numbers of permits issued for one-unit buildings, which are commonly called single-family units, and so-called multifamily units, which consist of units in two unit structures, units in three to four unit structures, and units in structures with five or more units. Townhomes, according to the Census Bureau, are included with the single-family units. These building permit numbers are also factored into the total population figures that the Census Bureau calculates as the base total population in the ACS data. One interesting thing to note in the Washington County data is the drop in the number of multifamily units over the last couple of years. Consistent with national trends, the average household size is declining in Washington County. The decline from 2021 to 2022 was statistically significant, but the change from '22 to '23 was not. The increase seen in 2024 is significant. As we move forward in the decade, we'll see if this is a reversal of the trend or a one-year aberration in the data. In general, house sizes are falling, both locally and nationally. The split between owner-occupied and renter-occupied housing units has been roughly 60/40 in the county and hasn't changed very much over the past few years. Rents are increasing, and by a significant amount each year. The overall increase from 2021 to 2024 is more than 20%. Another measure of housing affordability is to look at the share of renter households that are paying more than 30% of their household income toward rent. This is known as the share of cost-burden renter households. And of the more than 90,000 renter households in Washington County for whom gross rents were calculated in 2024, roughly half of them are cost-burdened. Because the range of uncertainty is in the 9% to 11% range, we can't say that the year-to-year variations are statistically significant. But the high number of households that might be struggling to pay rent is certainly an important indicator of a housing affordability crisis. While the ACS does report information on vacant housing units, the data does come with some rather wide ranges of uncertainty. You can see that in the, you know, they don't exactly have really tight margins on how many of those units are for rent, because a lot of it's calculated by interpolation. The percentage of workers 16 and older who drive alone to work in a car, truck, or van has risen a little since the pandemic disrupted commute patterns, where it was about 56% to 62% in 2021. It has been roughly 62% to 65% the last couple of years. Transit usage, walking and bicycling are all generally on the rise over the last few years. The margins of error on this slide are in the 0.2% to 0.7% range. So, some of the change is statistically significant, but not all. One unfortunate drawback about ACS commute data, however, is that the response form asks people only to mark the one mode choice that was used for most of the distance. So, for example, a commuter who bikes three miles in the morning from his house to the light rail stop and then takes the train 20 miles to his work would only register as a light rail rider, not as a person who also commutes by bike. As employers and workers continue to adjust following the pandemic, the share of workers who are usually working from home has declined from prior highs. We will see, as more data come in over the coming years, if this is a new normal. In 2024, there were between 11,300 and 16,100 households who did not have a vehicle at home. There were between 90,900 and 100,800 households that had just a single vehicle. This can have some policy impacts on us as we consider our transportation system. We need to make sure that we are planning for everyone, not just those with multiple vehicles available. There isn't much difference in the mean commute travel time to work over the last few years. For comparison, in 2024, the value for Oregon was 22.6 minutes, give or take .3 minutes. And the value for the United States was 25.6 minutes, give or take a tenth of a minute. And while these average values are statistically significant, they aren't very meaningful. They aren't meaningfully different, that is. On a side note, we don't use these travel times very much for transportation planning for a couple of reasons. One, there are other methods of asking people about their travel habits that tend to be more insightful. For example, the way these travel questions in the ACS are worded, it only asks how long the commute usually took in the week before the survey was filled out. The travel diary that asks about each day's drives yields higher resolution data. And automatic data from a smartphone app or from technology in the vehicle is even better because it doesn't rely on people's recollection of travel time or travel distance. Another reason why ACS data isn't always the best data source for transportation is that the survey's design only allows a limited amount of cross-tabulation by commute modes. As noted earlier, there isn't the ability to capture details about multimodal travel through this particular survey instrument. Thank you for taking some time to learn some of the insights into the Washington County population that we can get from the American Community Survey and data. If there are suggestions for what data would be beneficial to you in your role as Planning Commissioners, please let me know, and I would be happy to provide that for you.
Thank you. That was really interesting. Do Commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Will?
Thank you. My question is about what I've perceived in the graphic to show a drop in multifamily housing units over the last four years, the building permit statistic. I know that the county and different jurisdictions or whatever, this is just county data, not city data?
This is all data within Washington County. So, this includes units being built in the city.
Okay, yeah. Because I know there's like the new missing middle housing code updates, which allows, you know, like infill housing. And so, maybe on a property that before, you know, they'd have to do a three-unit plex, a triplex structure. With the new code, maybe they could do three single-family, you know, fee simple ownership type of products. So, you would think that if the drop in multifamily housing units was due to people choosing missing middle housing types, you'd see a spike or an increase in the single-family housing units. But it doesn't appear that. It's pretty flat. So, we're just producing fewer housing units overall. Is that what you see in this pattern?
Yeah, overall, there are fewer being built. You know, the missing middle and middle housing changes, a lot of those may not yet be reflected in the construction permits. A lot of those changes just took place over the last year or two. So, we may be seeing the benefit of those to the extent that those increase. I would hazard a guess that we will not see a significant increase because the middle housing, as a share of all residential units built, is relatively small. And so, whether those middle housing units get switched from, you know, small plex units that would have been counted in the multifamily units before and are now being counted in the single-family units because they're this new style of compact detached housing. If even to the extent that that change happens, it's still going to be relatively small in comparison to traditional stick-built, single-family units and traditional multifamily apartment complexes, which are where the bulk of those new construction numbers come from.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It'll be hard to see that. But if there was anything to see, many of the missing middle housing are possibly still in land use process and haven't moved a building permits, is what you're saying.
Exactly. But we'll see as we get into 2025 and 2026 how those start changing, especially for, you know, the plex units. But, you know, overall, countywide, there's just not that many of them. But, you know, overall, countywide, there's just not, not that many of them. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't really have a way of sorting that out through the Census Building Permit Survey. As part of some other data collection efforts that we're doing at the county, we are capturing, you know, some of the, the housing construction disaggregated by specific type. And so we will be able to answer questions like, how many new middle housing units are we seeing and of which types of, of construction?
If I could ask a follow-up question, because the decrease in multifamily housing unit seems by the graphic to be a pretty big deal, like a lot. But at the same time, people are better off in the county, so, and rents are, rents are getting higher, so there, there should be more money to be made in constructing apartment buildings, but apparently people are not choosing to construct apartment buildings. I wonder if there's something we're doing wrong where builders are choosing to build fewer apartment buildings?
Yeah. One of the, one of the factors that comes in is, you know, there, there's factors beyond just what's in the control of Washington County. A lot of the, the changes in, in financing over the last few years really have an, have an effect on whether or not a developer is, is able to bring a, a new apartment complex project forward. And that, that I think has, has been one of the, one of the challenges in Washington County specifically, meaning, you know, the units that, that we are, the locations where we are in charge of the building permits. We have seen very few building permit applications coming in for multifamily units. There's probably several factors at play, but certainly the, the financing and, and construction costs are a part of that.
Okay, so lots of things to watch here. You hear about the housing crunch and housing, housing crisis, and, and so these statistics are very interesting to see how we're doing. And lots of things to watch here. I appreciate your answer to my questions. Thank you, Chair.
I was wondering if I might add to that a little bit with the, with the, from the affordable housing perspective. There was some bond funds that were passed in 2018 that contributed to probably more permits being pulled in 21 through 23 for affordable multifamily housing as well, and that, those funds have tailed off. And so are reflected in the 24 numbers as well. And then along with that, some of the funding sources from Oregon Housing and Community Services for affordable multifamily were shifted around. And so there were fewer, at least affordable multifamily permits pulled statewide in, in '24, from my understanding. Do other commissioners have questions?
I have a question.
Vice Chair Monte Blanco.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you for this, Ken. And I, I really appreciate your acknowledgement of the race and demographic questionnaire, question and how, you know, this is a tool that we use and it's, it's far from perfect, but it is a tool that we have access to that is a pretty profound gift, I suppose. I was curious about Slide 24. I, I feel like we went through that too fast, and so I was confused. I'm wondering if we could, if you could bring it back up.
Slide 24, which, which one is that? Your, your numbers might be different than mine. You mean this, this one here?
Yes, I was, okay. I was just, I'm getting confused. I'm missing something, because it's saying that there's this many vacant housing and then this percentage is for sale, this percentage is for rent, that, leaving a significant number that's not available?
Ah, I, no, I, I apologize for, for not being more clear with the design of this slide. That means that total in the county, you know, there, there's somewhere between seventy-five hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred vacant housing units. The percentages, basically what, what it, the, the hundred percent for the for-sale units would be all of the owner-occupied housing in the county. So of the, the, of, you know, if you take the, the entire pot of owner-occupied units in the, in the county, you know, somewhere around one percent or a little bit less of those are vacant or were, were vacant as of the time the ACS survey went out in 2024. And of the, the rental units, somewhere between three and seven percent of the rental units of all of the rental units in the county, some, you know, three to seven percent of those were vacant at the time of the survey in 2024.
I'm caught up. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Additional questions? For Commissioner Justin, Vice Chair Monte Blanco, I can't really see if you have your hands raised very well, so go ahead and, and speak up if you have questions as well. Okay, it looks, it looks like that should do it. Thank you for the presentation. It was, for me, very interesting and appreciate you bringing all the information to us.
You're very welcome.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Maury Bdu. Teresa Cherniak, Community Planning Section Manager. And Suzanne Savin will give the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Let me just get myself situated a little bit. All right, so this is Suzanne Savin, Senior Planner with Community Planning. So I'm going to be giving the presentation about the Metro 2040 Center's Boundary Adoption Ordinance 908. And this is an outline of what I'm going to go through. I'm going to first provide some context for the ordinance and then a short overview of the, of the ordinance itself, and then some background information that leads up to how, to why we, we filed this ordinance. I'm then going to show the proposed center boundaries that the ordinance is proposing to adopt, and, and then talk about staff's proposed change to the filed ordinance and conclude with staff's recommendation. So as context, the state has a Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities CEFEC rules that it adopted a couple of years ago. And Metro has Urban Growth Management Functional Plan provisions, and both of those things require the county to adopt a Raleigh Hills Town Center boundary, a Sunset Town Center boundary, and an updated boundary for the Washington Square Regional Center. And so this ordinance is proposing to make those changes by making amendments to our Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area, otherwise known as the CFP. And as an overview, the ordinance is, proposes to amend the text of CFP Policy 15 to remove implementing strategy J. And a little later in the presentation, I'll talk about what that implementing strategy is and why we're proposing to remove it. And the ordinance also proposes to amend maps in CFP Policy 40. So specifically, it proposes to update the Washington Square Regional Center boundary and to add boundaries for the Raleigh Hills Town Center and Sunset Town Center, and then to make conforming amendments to all of the 2040 Design Types Maps in that section of the CFP to reflect the current boundaries of cities. And no public comments have been received thus far for the ordinance. So to provide some, some background on how this ordinance came to be, back in 1995, Metro, the regional government, adopted the Metro 2040 Growth Concept, which was a regional land use and transportation vision. And it included designating centers throughout the metro region. So some of these centers were town centers that were intended to provide services to thousands of people within a radius of about two to three miles. And a smaller number of the centers were regional centers intended to provide services to hundreds of thousands of people over a larger area. And this is sort of a zoom in on part of the Metro 2040 Growth Concept map that was adopted back in 1995. Metro has made some updates to it over time and it, it still exists. But what this map shows is it, it zooms in on the unincorporated county and shows the locations of various town centers in the unincorporated county and in the adjacent cities. So in around the year 2000, the county adopted boundaries for three of the four town centers that were, at that point, wholly within the unincorporated county. So the county adopted a boundary for the Bethany Town Center that's shown toward the top of the image there. And the county adopted a boundary for the Aloha Town Center that's shown sort of in the lower left. And the county adopted a boundary for the Cedar Mill Town Center that's in about the center of the image. There was one other town center that was wholly in unincorporated county at that time that the county started work on adopting a boundary for, and I'm going to talk about that next, it was the Raleigh Hills Town Center. So the county started doing some planning work back in 1999 to adopt a boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. And at that point in time, the Metro 2040 Growth Concept showed a generalized location for the Raleigh Hills Town Center as, as being roughly at the point where Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway intersects with Shoals Ferry Road and Olson Road. And they had sort of a, kind of blobby depiction that's shown here on the slide that showed that most of it was in the county, but that actually a portion of it extended into Multnomah County and City of Portland. So when the county was first contemplating or working on developing a, a boundary for this town center back in 1999, we conferred with the City of Portland, and the city indicated to the county that the city was not interested in having any part of this town center within the city limits. So on that basis, the county filed an ordinance in 1999, it was Ordinance 535, to adopt a specific boundary for Raleigh Hills Town Center that would be totally within the county. And this was the boundary that was proposed at that time. And it basically encapsulated a lot of lands around the intersection of Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway and Shoals Ferry Road that were, at that time, already designated for higher densities or higher intensities of development. The ordinance did get amended or engrossed in 2000 to make some changes to it, but that's, this was still the boundary that was proposed. It's important to note, though, that with this Raleigh Hills Town Center plan, it did not include just adopting a boundary. This plan also included making some changes to the areas within the boundary. So some of the changes that were proposed at that time were changing the land use designations of some of those properties within the boundary to allow even higher intensities or densities of development than were already allowed. There were also some proposals to add some, some new streets and pedestrian connections within that area and to require new development within the boundary to do certain things, such as be, be located closer to streets. The ordinance was ultimately rejected by the Board of Commissioners due to concerns of, of area property owners, so it, this boundary was not adopted. So instead, what happened in 2000, shortly after Ordinance 535 was rejected, the board adopted a subsequent ordinance that adopted a town center area of interest around the Raleigh Hills area instead of a specific boundary. So that area of interest is shown on this slide, you know, in the red box, and it's basically kind of a semicircle around that intersection instead of a specific boundary for the town center. So now I'm going to fast forward about twenty years. So I'm going from 2000, when Ordinance 535 was rejected, to 2020, which is when the governor had executive order, this executive order that directed state agencies to take action to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions and help address climate change. And that basically became in 2022, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, led to Land Conservation and Development Commission adopting the CEFEC rules. So the CEFEC rules require jurisdictions in Metro to adopt boundaries for all centers identified on the Metro 2040 Growth Concept map by the end of this year. And so staff knew at the time that the CEFEC rules were published that this meant that we would finally have to adopt a specific boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. What we learned a short while later is that we would also need to adopt a boundary for the Sunset Town Center and update our boundary for the Washington Square Regional Center, because those two areas also include county unincorporated properties. So with this ordinance, Ordinance 908 is going to be proposing to adopt a Raleigh Hills Town Center boundary, a Sunset Town Center boundary, and an updated Washington Square Regional Center boundary. What the ordinance will not do is it's not going to change any existing county or city land use designations, either inside or outside of these boundaries. It's not going to change any existing county or city development regulations or authorize any new development, and it won't increase vehicle trips or traffic or place any burdens on existing infrastructure. What it may do is it may position these centers, put them in a better position to perhaps qualify for grants, for, for funding, for street improvements or other things. It's also important to note that CEFEC is going to impact some other future work that the county is going to do regarding planning for centers in the urban unincorporated county. It includes requirements that apply to transportation planning. And so the county is going to be updating its transportation system plan over the next couple of years. And these rules are going to require the county to plan for enhanced pedestrian facilities and connected bicycle network and designing roadways to prioritize alternate modes, including bikes, transit, and pedestrians. So now I'm going to move into the specific proposed boundaries for this ordinance. So this is the proposed boundary on this slide for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. And staff had had a work session briefing with the Board of Commissioners last fall where we, where we talked with them about the Raleigh Hills Town Center and about this need for us adopting a boundary to comply with the CEFEC rules. And at that time, the board directed us to start with the boundary proposed by Ordinance 535 back in the year 2000 and try to stick with that to the extent that we could, given that maybe some, some, some specifics might have changed in the area. So we did start with that boundary, and we reached out to the City of Portland to ask again whether they were interested in having any part of this boundary be within the city, and they again said, no, they were not. But the City of Portland asked us to remove two properties in the northeast corner of the boundary because they were within the city's urban planning area. And accordingly, the county did remove those. So they're not, they're not showing as, as within the boundary in this, in this slide. We also reached out to the City of Beaverton because back in 1999 and 2000, the proposed boundary included only county unincorporated properties. But in the intervening twenty years, there have been some properties within this area that have annexed to Beaverton, and those are over on the, sort of the southwest portion of the boundary, and they're shown with a blue crosshatch. and they're shown with a blue crosshatch. Some of them are near Laurelwood Avenue, and some of them are near Shoals Ferry Road. The city said that they were amenable to having those city properties remain in this boundary. So they are remaining. The city is also taking their own separate ordinance through their city council that would also adopt this boundary, since it includes city properties as well as county properties. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about this text change to Comprehensive Framework Plan Policy 15 that I alluded to at the very beginning. So it is a comprehensive plan policy that states that it requires, and it's related to the Raleigh Hills Town Center. So it requires Beaverton, Portland, Washington County, and Metro to enter into an urban planning agreement for the Raleigh Hills Town Center to assure implementation of Metro provisions related to town centers. This language was put into the CFP based on a Metro ordinance from 1996 that required us to put this into our CFP. Since then, a lot of things have changed, you know, in the late, after 1996 and continuing to the present, the county has worked with the cities that are within the county to adopt urban planning area agreements. And we have an urban planning area agreement with the City of Beaverton that includes the area that's within the Raleigh Hills Town Center. So we already have that in place. So this ordinance proposes to delete this implementing strategy because it's no longer needed for these jurisdictions to enter into an urban planning agreement for this town center. We discussed this proposed deletion with Metro staff, and they agree that this implementing strategy no longer seems relevant, and they have no objection to it being deleted. So this is, I'm moving on to the Sunset Town Center proposed boundary, which is shown on this slide. So the Sunset Town Center is in the area surrounding the intersection of Highway 217 and Highway 26. This boundary was developed in coordination with Beaverton, because the boundary includes probably 60% City of Beaverton land, 40% Washington County unincorporated lands. The City of Beaverton lands are shown with the blue crosshatch, and they're mainly on the west portion. The county urban unincorporated properties are shown with various solid colors. And so most of these properties are, have county land use designations that allow high intensities and densities of development or institutional uses. So for example, the large, blue-colored area on the east side of the boundary is the properties that are Providence-St. Vincent Hospital, Catlin Gable School, and one of the Beaverton, one of the elementary schools in the Beaverton School District. And lastly, Washington Square Regional Center. Give a little bit of chronology about Washington Square Regional Center. Around the year 2000, just to back up even further, in the Metro's urban growth map has a, had a Washington Square Regional Center identified on it. And in 2000, both the City of Tigard and the City of Beaverton separately adopted Washington Square Regional Center boundaries. And their boundaries were quite similar. The one difference that they had is that for the portion of the regional center within City of Beaverton, Tigard and Beaverton showed that boundary a little bit differently. But both of those cities included as part of the regional center some county urban unincorporated properties. And those are mainly clustered around the portion of Hall Boulevard that is lying east of and south of the intersection with Southwest Olson Road. And the county adopted, back in 2000, the county adopted a Washington Square Regional Center boundary for the unincorporated area that was basically the same as what Tigard had adopted. And so in 2021, the City of Tigard led a planning process to update the regional center boundary, and they involved the county in that planning process. And the county supported the updated boundary that Tigard had proposed. Tigard then adopted that updated boundary in 2024, but the county did not update our boundary at that time. So with the CFECC requirements, we are now required to update the boundary as it affects the Washington County urban unincorporated area to match what Tigard had adopted for that same area. And now I'm switching over to the proposed changes to the filed ordinance that staff has identified. So shortly after the ordinance was filed, Metro had a conversation with staff. They had looked at these maps. And they had a couple of concerns with the filed map for the regional center boundary. And that map is shown on the left side of the slide, and it has the parts of the Washington Square Regional Center that are within the unincorporated area shown as a solid pink color. And it also has as context a hatch to represent the portions of the regional center that were within cities. And so Metro's concerns had to do with that hatched area that was the contextual for the cities. And so Metro indicated that the map legend was incorrect because it indicated that the portion of the regional center within the city was just within Tigard, when in fact, it's also, there's a portion of it that's within Beaverton. And the other concern that Metro had about the hatched area was that they noted that Beaverton and Tigard were different in terms of how they showed the boundary that's within the City of Beaverton. And so Metro said, if you're going to show the city extents on your map, you need to show the city extents of this regional center in Beaverton to match Beaverton's map, and the city extents within Tigard to match Tigard's map. So in response to those comments, and to basically kind of make things more clear and simple, staff's proposing to remove the depiction of the regional center extents within the cities altogether from this map and just show the Washington Square Regional Center extents within the unincorporated county. And that will remove the inaccuracies that Metro has identified. And it will also make this particular map consistent with all of the other CFP Policy 40 maps for all of the other Metro 2040 Design Types, because all of the other maps only show the portions of these Metro Design Types that are within the unincorporated area. They don't show the portions that are within cities. So with that, I'm just going to summarize the changes that are proposed by this ordinance. We're amending the text of CFP Policy 15 to remove implementing strategy J. And we're amending CFP Policy 40 to update the Washington Square Regional Center boundary and add boundaries for the Raleigh Hills Town Center and Sunset Town Center, and make conforming amendments to reflect the current city boundaries on all of the 2040 Design Type maps. And so staff's recommending engrossment of the ordinance to amend the regional center boundary map in Exhibit 2, to remove the depiction of the Washington Square Regional Center's extents within Beaverton and Tigard, and to remove the corresponding map legend item. And we note that those changes are shown in Attachment A of the staff report. So staff's recommending that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing and recommend approval of the ordinance to the board with engrossment to include the changes proposed by staff as shown in Attachment A of the staff report in this presentation.
Thank you very much. And seven? Do commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Will.
I'm sure you guys were thorough. But I'm just curious, does it ever happen? You know, these maps are showing areas that are unincorporated, and these planning processes take time. Has anybody asked to annex into the city recently in these areas? Or is that, that would have been a razor red flag, and you would have had to quickly correct the map? If anybody got an annex during the planning cycle? Are these maps 100% accurate?
I believe they are accurate. Teresa, looks like she wants to say something.
Right, they're accurate at this moment. One of the things that Suzanne indicated that we were updating some of the other maps to reflect current conditions. And in that case, we're updating those other maps to show the various annexations that have happened since those maps were originally done. So any of these is kind of a point in time. And so at this point in time, this does reflect all the annexations that we are aware of. In a month, some of that may change, and at some point in the future, we will catch that up in our mapping.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Are there additional questions? Commissioner Fry.
Thank you, Chair. I guess it's almost, it was almost stated, but it feels like this is primarily just a procedural requirement, and that the impacts are going to be pretty limited to what it changes. So it kind of feels like another one of those moments where it's like, this is something we have to do to stay in compliance with something. And then really, if there's going to be an additional change that would impact the community or a property owner, it's going to have to go through some other land use process or approval process anyway. Is that fairly accurate?
I think that's accurate, Commissioner Fry. We are simply adopting boundaries. We're not making any other changes. And if there were any changes in the future to something like land use designations, for example, there would have to be a separate public process for that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, if anyone in the room has questions, go ahead and speak up now, since I can't see you. Okay. So at this time, since we're done with Commissioner questions, I'd like to move on to the public hearing. Clerk Brown, do we have any community members signed up to testify?
We have no one signed up in advance. There are two participants online. Would anyone attending this virtually like to testify on this item before the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. And I am seeing no hands raised. So no, no one at this time to testify. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no one testifying, I hereby close the public, the public meeting. So at this point, we will move on to Planning Commission deliberation. What comments do commissioners have about this ordinance? Commissioner Will.
Thank you, Chair. I think the staff did a good job preparing this report and presentation, and it seems like they're very thorough in, you know, trying to work to gain compliance. And I think I'm going to support this engrossment.
Thank you, Commissioner Will.
This is Felicita. Yeah, totally agree with what Commissioner Fry and Commissioner Will have shared. Thank you to the staff. I really appreciate the breakdown of what this does do and what it doesn't do. That's very helpful. And I'm excited about potential grant opportunities for these areas and how they might be strong or might be able to compete and be stronger in those applications. I think a lot about the Raleigh Hills intersection. And I'm hopeful for that area especially. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Additional deliberation? Seeing none, I would also like to echo, thanks for the thorough report. And that I will be supporting this, especially because of the thoroughness of the report, the information received, and the lack of public comments doesn't seem like it's very contentious because of that. So at this point, I would like commissioners to, I would like to invite a motion concerning the ordinance.
I'm happy to attempt to move through the approval of Ordinance 908 to the Board of Commissioners with engrossment to include changes proposed by staff as shown in Attachment A of the staff report in this presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Monte Blanco. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Just. At this time, Clerk Brown, can we please move to a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Carlson is not with us, so Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner Just?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg is out. Commissioner Whips?
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Vice Chair Monte Blanco?
Yes.
And Chair Maury B. Do?
Yes.
Thank you. We do have seven in favor.
Thank you. So this week, we don't have any minutes, so we will move on to Planning Commission announcements. Do commissioners have anything they'd like to share? Okay. Next item on the agenda is adjournments, so without objection, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Sorry I couldn't be there in person today.